Called to order the Grant County Work Session February 19th, 2013. Welcome everybody, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As soon as the flag is taken from the state and the mayor's chair, does this seem to symbol a perfect principle among the united cultures?
Okay, first item on the agenda today is to review the February 21st regular meeting agenda. John, you want to go through the meeting agenda for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We start off with a public hearing. This is the discussion on the ordinance 13-01 entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing a Tax Rebate to Benefit Low-Income Property Taxpayers for Taxable Years 2013 and 2014." This was, that ordinance was brought up during the recent election. It brought to our attention, it's something that has to be considered in every odd year to whether or not the commission wishes to allow a tax rebate. It's not, it's not a tax rebate on the property taxes that are collected in the assessors, in the treasures office that are assessed by the assessor. It's a rebate on your income tax based on your income, you have to be under $24,000, household income, and I believe that's for the full house?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. That for the entire house?
I think that's per house, yes.
So, I don't know if you want to talk about that?
Well, this is the, related to the resolution that we, that you all passed, I think a couple weeks ago, and since that time, we have done what we're supposed to. We've published notice of your intent to consider the ordinance, and we broadcast on the radio, and you all received copies of the ordinance and the kind of draft of the ordinance over in the clerk's office. And John gave kind of a general overview there. This will be for low-income Grant County citizens who own a residence in Grant County, and if they pay property taxes within the taxable year, then they could potentially request this rebate through their income taxes. John's right, the cap is $24,000. Per, 350 is the cap on the rebate, except for if you are married, you get half if you're filing separately. Does that make sense?
Uh-huh.
And then, other details are that the county would be responsible for paying for this rebate. It doesn't just come from the state, we have to pay the state back, so it's something that, that's going to cost us potentially quite a bit. I did a comparison with, is it Santa Fe County? Yeah, Santa Fe County, because that was, there are only two other counties that have enacted the rebate, or implemented the rebate through ordinance, and Santa Fe and Los Alamos. And Los Alamos really has a, it's quite richer than Grant County, so it's not a very good comparison. Santa Fe was closer than I expected, and they're about five times larger than us, so what I did is I just did one-fifth of what it's cost them. When they initially started the program, I think it cost them around $300,000, and then three years later, it's at $500,000, so it's going up very quickly. And I'm not sure where they're going to go with that. I talked with their county attorney just a little bit, but the, the cost of it is jumping quickly. And, so for us, I averaged, it would be about in between 61, around $60,000, $61,000 to $100,000. And what that is, is I just compared their $300,000 to $500,000 in that three-year span, so ours could potentially be between $60,000 to $100,000. We actually have a slightly higher percentage of homeowners, not much, just a...
In Santa Fe?
Yeah, a little bit. I just looked at the Bureau since this day, and then, what else? And our property, and our property level was just slightly lower, so ours actually, based on that information, might be slightly higher.
What about the average value of household?
I might have that. That's not something that I looked up.
The only, the only reason I say that is because if you're taking the amount of taxes they pay, that would be on the valuation, that's correct? Mr. Assessor, right?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay.
You still have that trick of the cap, so although that would, is that where you're going?
I don't really know where I'm going.
Helpful to the... The thing that we discussed with the other chairman of committees, is that estimating how much this will cost, it's really difficult, and probably the proportional estimate, I think, is probably most helpful. So, other counties have gone to their assessor and tried to come up with a really broad estimate, based on if there are this many people that qualify, if there are this many people that qualify, but I have to be honest, it's, it's not a very precise estimate. I felt like the proportion, proportional estimate was better, just because we actually have some numbers from Santa Fe, but that's the hard thing about this program is, I don't, I don't know.
It can vary.
If we have, if we have a very, very interested community, and a lot of people apply, it could potentially cost us a lot of money very quickly. So, that's something you should consider.
Mr. Assessor, you have a thought?
Property ownership, just like the 65-years-old older, so if the properties didn't trust, or, then I don't believe that they qualify, and I can answer that. I know I'm 65-years-old, because it's, it's the single resident occupancy in that home. So, if the property's in a trust, or, you know, an LLC or something, then I don't know if they would qualify, that's something you might want to...
I don't know.
Okay. So, it would have to be the ownership, so...
Right. And, and also with the 65-years-old older, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, is that it's everybody living in the home, so if you have grandkids living in the home that are, that are working, that income also has to report it now, right? Can we, you know, I don't know if we can enforce that, or how we enforce that, because it's been difficult for me, but it's everyone living in the household, so, you know, that $24,000 threshold, if you've got, you know, grandkids living and they're, they're working, that income also has to be reported.
Okay. John?
Yeah, and kind of coming off of what Randy said, the one thing, I was talking to Commissioner Hall about yesterday, you know, we were talking, and it just kind of came to me as, that instance is, we check, Randy tries to check, they bring in their information, so he can check the taxes to make sure they qualify, well, this isn't, this is out of our hands, it goes to the state, and so, you could have family members living with you, but if you turn in, if you own the property and you turn in, you're on a fixed income of $20,000, and that goes up to the state, we may be paying, but they may be bringing in $100,000 to that household, and there's nothing we can do about it. We just get a bill from the state that says, here's what you owe us, and I don't know how it's all checked, and so, one thing that, if this is something that we would like to do, you know, and do in the future, it's always good to try and do something for the community, is, it would be nice to be able to sit down with the assessor and take time before the next time we do it possibly, and, and look at the numbers, try and get some truer numbers on what we think it would be. We've got a couple revenue streams right now that are kind of always iffy, the, that you never know what they're going to do, and so, we'd be looking at all those effects and try and find some more information about how this whole program works through the state level, because I know that's one thing with, I talked to the Santa Fe County manager, and that's what they said, is they never know what the bill's going to be, you never know when you're going to get it, all of a sudden you get it, and you've got to turn around and pay it real quick, or you're getting penalties and interest on it, and it's a really hard program, but they, they've had a real hard time administering it, and so they didn't know if they were going to continue it this year or not, and I haven't heard if they've already voted on it or anything. But, that was some of the concerns they had on it, and, and so it'd be nice to find out more information, and dig into what they've done, and maybe get with the assessors up there and see if they have some way to predict, because if we took a $500,000 hit, that's major to Grant County. To Santa Fe, it's not as bad. To Grant County, that's a...
It's even bad to them.
That's a, that's, but that's a big hit.
And with sequestration...
Exactly.
Possibilities.
They have the pilting question, they have all these things in question. We took a hit from the mines that we don't know, we haven't got numbers to see if that comes back this year, you know, so we've, we've got some questions in our revenue.
Okay. Commissioner Hall?
I think the other problem that we're going to have is that the first year, we may not have as many, then the next year, it can fluctuate, and it's going to be hard to do a budget on something like that.
That's seen, is that once people start figuring it out, they really take advantage of it.
I don't want to be critical of the legislature, but this is one of those things where the legislature passes a statute that makes them look good, but the county and the people pay for it, so it's, it's, it can be very difficult.
Wow, that shows it up. Kind of like several other things we're doing this year.
So, that will be here. I don't know that we've gotten much comments, or much people come in the clerk's office to read the ordinance, so we'll have a public hearing.
Maybe, Mr. Assessor, maybe that's something that we ought to work with, with the association and the counties next year as a priority, to deal with that, one way or the other.
Right. And, and the other thing, the 65-years-old older is $32,000 or less in income, so there's a difference in income here, based on that as well, so, I mean, yeah, I think it's one of the things that we probably want to get with the association, see where they stand with the 32 counties.
All right. Thank you very much, let's move on.
Okay. Go into the financials, which is the February 18th expenditure report, you have that in your book, it's $2,895,615.50. This is almost a month and a half, our last meeting was January 10th, and so we've got a little over a month in, into it. You've got three payrolls, and then the major, you know, the only real major expense other than normal operating was, we spent $226,000 on the remodel at the conference center. That was, that was the major construction program that we've got going on. That's really the only major project, we're getting ready to gear into the other ones that we've, the Fair Barn and others, but this is the only major construction project going on right now. It's close to finishing.
Looking really good.
Yeah, all we really have left is the parking lot, I was speaking with Mr. Robinson, the architect on it, yesterday, and that's really what we're doing, is they've put in the tubes for the new lighting, got it all ready to go, just waiting, you know, hopefully we don't get snow this week, because that's what keeps delaying us, is we keep getting the ground wet and we can't pave, so hopefully, we don't get too much snow and we can go ahead and get that paved. Decore Camino's building is done, it's done on the inside, it's all wired, all we've got to do is put the phone system in, which I've already talked with BroCom and WNM Communications, they're giving me some information on the phone system for there, and then, everything else is ready to go, and then we'll wait to look at the inside of that building. Found out, as the chairman spoke, the sequester, they've already froze $40 million for the Economic Development Administration, who gives us that funding, who was going to give us the other $2 million, so we're now kind of in hold, waiting to see if that money gets freed up, if that money doesn't, then we'll probably try and look at, within the county, if we have some money to at least go in and like redo the flooring in there. It would be nice to do that, Justin's department's gone in and painted, but it would be nice to be able to put some new carpeted, carpet in there. And I spoke with Mr. Redford, used a product up at the university, some squares, carpet squares, that work really well up there, that they've been liking, so we might be able to do that, so if you ruin one, you just pull out the square and you put a new square in, instead of having to replace a large room, so. So, but that's, that's really the only major project, and that's why the expenditures are higher this time, is because of the month-and-a-half timeframe and all the payrolls that are in it.
We're going to have the, the other report this month also?
The financial? I can get that to you, I've finished importing all the revenues, and so I can run that and print it, if you want that added to the agenda to give you. I've given you the pooled cash reports from February.
Totally, we need to have that.
So, okay. I will have that, we'll add that to the agenda, and I'll get it to Randy today, and that will get to you all, so that you can see it, I'll email it to you. Into new business, first item of new business is Mr. Montoya to give statement regarding Hila National Forest road closures, which to come and address the commission to give some input, some points. I believe they're based on the meeting we had, and some information, some research that he's done, he would like to just bring those in front of the commission for your knowledge.
Our county rocket scientist?
Our rocket scientist. The next is the New Mexico Department of Game and Fish to give an update on the deer management zone, just wanted to come and update the commission, they've kept the commission informed throughout the whole process. Article in the paper, says in the town, and I believe he might be talking about the portion they did right out in the county, too, is in the paper, they've done some relocating.
The three-mile buffer.
Yeah, so, that's...
Let's make sure we get good contact information from them this time, because I know we had calls last time about how to, how to get in that program, and we didn't do a good job getting able to get ahold of them, or they were just difficult to get ahold of one or the other.
The next item is the appointment of individuals to the Grant County Subdivision Review Committee. The subdivision review committee currently is expired, this is a group that just meets whenever somebody brings a subdivision in front of the, to the commission, they can look at it, and then it comes on to the commission for approval.
So, this is different from the ETJ?
Different from the ETJ. Our ETJ committee, our members are, are full, we have two members, the town has two, but they currently only have one of those members, and so they've got to find a second member, and then when those members all come together, then the four of them pick the fifth.
And by then, somebody will have resigned, and they won't be able to do that.
Well, Anthony's tried to set up some meetings, he's not here today, he's tried to set up some meetings with that group.
We don't get that done this time, we're probably going to have to rewrite the, the JPA work, because it's not, I mean, two years of not having that is not satisfying.
Exactly, and the statute outlined the process, but the town wanted to have it through the JPA, and so this is why we have the JPA process, and it's been a lot longer, I mean, we've been doing this for quite some time, we hired, we got our two members, and then it took about two years for them to find their two, and by the time they found their two, our two, the terms had expired, and so we had to reappoint our two, and when we reappointed our two members, one of their members quit, and so now they're looking for a member again on their side.
What I mean, it's just not, coordination between the government, it's not, it's not working out, and if we can't get that done pretty quickly, I'll speak to the man.
Yeah, because that's where it is right now, is it's sitting in the town's hands, that they need another member for the ETJ, and then those four have to pick a fifth. This is our committee.
So, we're under our committee, we have seven. This is the normal seven, right?
This is the normal seven members, we have six apart.
And I appreciate her also applying for this, and actually, I don't know exactly what the reg, did you apply because you wanted to, or?
Or is it a different...
I didn't talk to them.
Look at me, I was like, sign this letter.
I knew that there was some kind of deal, and I might not be able to, but I went ahead and applied for it anyway.
No, what I, what I think we need to do, Abby, is, I don't know exactly what sets up this committee, but we probably need to have two, two standing members, and they ought to be our planning department, department. And John can be their backup.
Whoa, whoa, no, I'm sure that's against statute. If it isn't, we can make...
Anthony's not here.
Yeah, we're starting right now for the coming year, so we would, I think we'll...
These people serve several years' terms, it's just they had expired.
And, and if Anthony would have been here, he probably could argue against this, but since he chose to miss, I would think that maybe on, on Thursday, we would just add Anthony's name down there as number seven, and we'd have a full committee to start the year, because I thought that.
I have no problem with that.
Listen up, the losses.
Otherwise, he just needs to write a letter.
I just think it's illegal for me to be an option.
He just needs to write a letter and apply.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, we'll write. Go ahead, move on.
So, yeah. The next item is approved disprove for AMT, sponsorship in the amount of $15,000. It's kind of, there's a couple items, they've also got a resolution further back in the agenda. The Turiheal, as you know, is the bike race that's been going on for 26 years, is this the 27th year? It's the 27th year. In the past, the last two years, Grant County has contributed money in the amount of $15,000 for the advertising of the Grant County, and, and some of the programs that they've done, and Jack and Michelle and Jim are here today, answering questions if the commission has any, about what this would be used for. They've got a new program they're looking at this year, it's using the social media, as you know, everybody's going to the Twitter, Facebook, instant message, I don't know what the other ones are, there's two other ones. I'm obviously not using them. But, and so this would give live race coverage, it would give up-to-date information about the county, as the races, it's leading up to the race, it would kind of start now, leading up, advertising the benefits of coming to Grant County and staying here, as a tourist, and that's what this would be, basically, the $15,000 would be going to advertise Grant County as a tourism destination. It's continuing to put out social media press releases throughout the race, you all got copies of it from last year, the financial impact of the race was over $500,000 for a five-day race brought into Grant County, so it's a very, very good economic development driving tool, and it's bringing people from all over the world. Last year, there were teams from Mexico, uh...
Venezuela?
No. Colombia, China, there are teams from all over the world.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Great program, we just got to keep, keep on helping this.
Any updates or anything?
We could bring in some, some motels or some houses.
And, yeah, the question I asked, did you have any luck with the Virgin Atlantic people for sponsorship? Jack? Did you have any luck with the Virgin Atlantic people in sponsorship, or anything?
Yeah, I, I sent an email to, what's it, Mark, Mark Butler, but have not received a response back from Mark.
That would be a sweet...
I think it's, yeah, a really nice joining of, of things going on in the southern part of the state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, in this paper Jim just gave is, is kind of a breakdown of what I was talking about on the social media, Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, and Google Plus. This is an individual, Lynn, that does this, she just did it for a current race, and really increased, increased the people following it, and people, you know, finding out more about that community. I think it was, the original letter was over 300 percent? Jack? Something like that. Increased the hits to their website and...
She was employed by Louisville, Kentucky, just as, earlier this month, Louisville was the first city, actually the first location in the United States ever to host a World Cyclocross Championship, has primarily been held in Europe. This is the first time it's ever been held in the United States, held in Louisville early February, and Lynn was their social media director, their press, their press officer, and from the information she gave us, everything she was involved in, as far as social media, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, everything really improved as far as their metrics, and she has these terms that I don't really understand what they, what they mean, as far as...
My daughter can explain it.
That might help, but everything looked really positive as far, as far as Lynn's involvement with, with Louisville, the World Cyclocross, and Lynn has a lot of knowledge about Tour of the Hila, she's been here many times covering the race for her, her certain website, and she has years of marketing experience, years of IT experience, and we think it's a really great match for us to be working with, with her as our press officer going into the Tour of the Hila, and she plans on doing press releases, press conferences, live video interviews of racers, I think the biggest thing for us is her live Twitter coverage of both the men's pro race and the women's pro race on an equal basis. We had this program last year called Tour Tracker, we only covered the men's race, and we really got nailed from the women's side, we got some angry letters from Europe, or emails from Europe that John received, wanted to find out why we're not covering the women. This year, we don't...
That's all they contracted for, or?
Uh, we were just really interested in the pro men's race, but that was with this, this program called Tour Tracker.
Right.
We don't, we can't afford Tour Tracker this year, and Lynn is, is a great alternative, and she'll bring two, herself and another partner with her, and they'll be embedded in both men and women's races, and they'll be doing the Twitter, covering both men's and women's races through, you know, through their Twitter accounts, and so we should have, I think, really good coverage of, of the two pro races.
So, are they riding or driving?
They'll be, they'll be embedded in the, in the media cars.
Oh, in the media?
Yeah, yeah.
So, and, and we'll change on this, it's, it's, we're not sponsoring, what we're doing is we're paying for advertising of Grant County, is what the commission would be paying for, as Jack, in this letter states, is she'll start to advertise things to do in Silver City, Grant County, reasons why you should be coming here, as she's leading up to the race, and as she's riding through the race, she'll be talking about the scenery and, and things as she goes through, and, and posts her Twitter and her social media updates.
The same amount we've, we've done?
It's the same amount we've done in the last two years to the Tour of the Hila.
It was such a good form.
Yeah, and so, it's a really good, like I said, last year it was...
Over $530,000 is what your, um...
What, taking a financial impact? Uh, $561,000.
$561,000.
Yeah, it's got to be the number one event, so.
Yeah, and we appreciate all the stuff you guys do, you do a great job putting it on.
Thank you.
It's a great event every year, and like I said, it's got to be our number one event. If it's not number one, it's right close to number one, so.
Any, any other questions, guys?
No.
Thank you.
All your hard work.
Next is lower members volunteer firefighter, I'm reporting to the Public Education, Public Employees Retirement Association, this is something we have to do each year, before March 31st, this department got theirs in early and got it to us, so we put it on, we should be seeing the rest of the fire departments in the March meeting, they do this each year, and all this does is it, it reports who their membership is, so that they can qualify for the retirement. Currently, if you serve 25 years as a volunteer firefighter, you get $200 a month in retirement. There's legislation out there right now, and I can't tell you where it's currently at, I'd have to look at it, but they're trying to increase that to $250 a month for 25 years of service, and that money comes from the fire excise tax monies that the state has, the state fire funds, they put a portion of that over there for those members, and they don't have to contribute at all.
From what I understand, is the only people that are fighting it are the EMS people, because they're trying to get some of those fire funds over to there.
Yeah, EMS departments have always gotten a very small portion of the state fire funds, I guess...
One of those in-house grants, it's got...
You have, the next item is an EMS Fund Act application, and, and they get about $3,000 for it a year, whereas a fire department, a main station, is getting anywhere from about $55,000 to $70,000 a year already for being a fire station, and so the EMS people are trying to get themselves more money. Most of our EMS departments are embedded in a fire station, so a fire station helps offset some of the costs of EMS, it's really the standalone departments that stand on their own that really hurt.
Only have one.
Yes.
Members.
Yeah. So, that's the PERA, the, the next one is the EMS Fund Act application for Sapiro. All of the others have already been done, this is the last one of our fire departments for the EMS, they spoke with the chief, they had just had, the member that takes care of this application was out of the area, unable to return to the area, so they weren't able to get it in with the other departments, they spoke with the state, and they've been given an extension until the 26th of this month, and so, the commission approving, if the commission approves it on Thursday, we'll turn around and send it up right away, and they'll meet all the deadlines to get their funding for the next year. Chief wanted to pass along, he appreciates this, the commission accepting this and taking it under consideration to get it up there for their funding, because they really, really do need it out in that area, and that's been a department that's seen a lot of change because of, it used to be covered by Hila Regional, and then they've now pulled the ambulance from there and moved it to Bayard, and so now this department's trying to pick up and become its own EMS service, all standalone, and not under the hospitals.
Bayard?
No, Sapiro. Sapiro, because they've moved the fire, the ambulance to Bayard, so they do a good job, they're working... They're working real hard out there. Next item is contracts and agreements. This is the agreement, the commission had done all the applications for the local DWI money. They sent that in. This is the ensuing, the agreement from it. Cindy was awarded ninety-one thousand, three hundred dollars in grant expenditures. She'll match that with twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty in in-kind for a total budget of a hundred and four thousand and fifty dollars. So that's what this is, so she can continue to carry on her program. The next item is the memorandum of understanding with the Grant County Community Health Council. This is an item we had last year. I don't know if Tiffany's here, I don't see her. Tiffany brought forward. This kind of started with Commissioner Miller wanted to try and set something up as a clearing house for people requesting money from the county so that you didn't have to get a one-sentence email from somebody saying, "I want four thousand dollars," and it violates anti-donation or violates something, and you have to weed through those.
And duplication also.
Yeah. And so the health council approached the commission that this is something they used to do for a different grant program that they would be willing to do for the commission. And so they've kind of come up with a proposal on how they would sort it, the funding request form that people would have to fill out that they could then go through and not necessarily, the health council won't be necessarily making the final determination on it. What they'll do is just tell you whether or not this application meets the goals that the commissioners have set forth for them. So if the commissioners are saying, "We wish to fund education programs or library programs," they'll be looking for that stuff. They're gonna take this, every time somebody puts an application, they're gonna look to see if it violates anti-donation. If it does, then they'll make recommendations with the people and tell them, "Look, we can't. This is something that violates the anti-donation, but if you make this change, if it's a service." They'll help weed out some of that, and then they'll come to the commission so that you can truly have some backup on them instead of one-sentence emails saying, "I would like money for buying furniture." We can't do that a lot of times. And so it really helps with some of the issues in that respect.
Yeah, what I really liked about it is what you're doing is that you don't have duplication where you have three organizations doing the same thing. And this way, we've got a good idea. It's a clearing house so that we're better able to understand where the money is going and what is being spent for, and then make a determination who's better to accomplish that.
Yeah.
I think I liked the program. Just, I want them to report to the manager when it comes to them deciding if they qualify or not.
And that's fine. Yeah, no, we can do that. I know Tiffany sent me some messages this morning that she had tried to reach you, but you've been busy with all the water stuff the last couple of days, I know, because I've seen all the text messages. And so she'll gladly try and sit down with you if you need her to sit down with you. But we can definitely, you can make that recommendation. This is a proposal based on conversations they've had with myself, with Christie, taking it back, looking at what they used to do before to try and get something that could be beneficial to the commission. So you can change it any way. We can gladly have them bring them to me, and then I can bring them in front of the commission and say, "These are items that meet our criteria to come forward to you guys for recommendations."
Well, one thing that we can definitely do is, you've gotta do something better than what we've done for the last couple of years. And if we start with this, if we don't, if we see something as we move along that we don't like, we'll start tweaking it. So tweak it until it doesn't work at all, probably.
Exactly. The next item is just the ratification of an agreement with Mary Lorraine Zunich and Lindy Kerr. These are two agreements that I've executed on behalf of the commission. They were agreements that had to be done and sent up or put in place for that restorative justice program so that we could keep that going. And then we brought them in front of the commission for the ratification so that you guys can see what we did. And these are, like we talked about, they are based on, excuse me, they're based on that grant funding we've received for the restorative justice. The money doesn't come out of the general fund. They were given that extension. They've submitted a new proposal for the new RFP that's gone out to try and continue this program for another three years, but the change will be going forward. Currently, the way the program is, it's for Grant, Luna, and Hidalgo Counties. The way the new RFP they responded is just Grant County. And in the discussions, the reason why they did that is because Grant County's been very proactive in working on the restorative justice up here. It hasn't been as proactive in Luna and Hidalgo Counties. And so Luna and Hidalgo chose to go on their own, and so Grant County decided they would be on their own. They've got a committee that looked at it on what packages they'll work on, and I think it'll be a real strong program. I don't think it's gonna take away. It's just that as a tri-county area that is originally set up, it just wasn't working as well. And really, each program is independent. They hire people to do in the schools the same type of things, but they work independently of each other. And so it doesn't hurt the program by separating it and say, "They're individual programs" and letting them run individually. The next item is an agreement for airport projects with the New Mexico Department of Transportation Aviation Division for Phase Three at the reconstruction of the public apron at the airport for five hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. This is a federal aviation grant where the federal government pays ninety-five percent of it, which is five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. State aviation will pay two and a half percent at thirteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and Grant County are responsible for two and a half percent at thirteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And this is to finish the reconstruction of our apron out there in front of all the T-hangers and the hangers there. And so Justin's been working with WH Pacific, getting these projects taken care of. This will go, this is just the application to the state aviation side to make sure we get their money secure as the federal department. The federal government will send their applications later, and we do those resolutions that give me the authority to sign those agreements as we've done in the past. The next item is amendment number one to the 2011 federal grant, EMW 2011 EP 00051, the New Mexico Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, an amount of ten thousand, seven twenty-eight forty-three. This is the grant for the emergency manager. It's an extension to that grant to make it terminate on June 30th, 2013, and increasing it by ten thousand dollars to make the total award thirty-two thousand, one eighty-five twenty-nine. This is one that we use to offset the cost of having an emergency manager. It pays half, it pays a portion of his wage, not exactly half. It's based on how much time he does emergency management. They pay us back his salaries. Going to the resolutions, we have a resolution number R 1310, authorizing and approving the submission of an application for financial assistance to the New Mexico Finance Authority for the PA Volunteer Fire Department to acquire 2013 water tender. We did two of these last meetings for the Fairbarn construction and also to purchase a truck for Sapiro Creek. This is now PA wishes to, they've gotten approval to spend up to a hundred and fifty thousand, sixty-two dollars on a new fire truck. They wish to go to New Mexico Finance Authority. They're...
They're back in business.
They are back in business, yes. There's been some issues with New Mexico Finance Authority. Probably about three weeks ago, the chairman and I were up there, and we sat down and met with the New Mexico Finance Authority. Their forensic audits are done, their audits were done. They had always retained about fifty million dollars that they were doing these smaller loans with. They're now back to where they can issue bonds again, the big loans, like they originally were gonna do for the hospital. So it might be a possibility if we go forward with the hospital bonds, the other portion, the twenty-four million dollars approximately that's left, it might go through the Finance Authority because they have that ability again now. But we've done some of the smaller loans through, continue to do that. They've continued to process them. This one will go through in their March meeting because their February meeting, I think they meet the 26th of February. So you haven't, this hasn't met their deadline for that. But our Fairbarn and the Sapiro truck are on the February meeting for approval. So it's a very good program.
What they do with their fifty million revolving fund is they take it, they'll loan it to the hospital over a varied group of maturities, and they go out and match those assets, their assets, with liabilities by selling bonds to individuals or corporations or whatever with those same maturity dates. So they're all matched up, and they're paid off at the same time.
Yeah. And one change that they have made since they've basically opened back up for business, I guess they were never shut down, but they've started their full services again, is in the past, you used to be able to pay off early without a penalty. Now there's a penalty for paying off early. So if you take out a seven-year loan, you have to pay it for seven years, or you pay a penalty for paying it off early. Is one thing they've changed, and it's for that reason that the chairman said, is they were taking out a seven-year loan, and then they were going out and taking out a seven-year debt to cover this stuff. And we would pay off early, but they couldn't. And so they would have to hold for the seven years. And so they've changed that now that you cannot prepay anything ten years or less.
You can pay it off, you just have to pay off.
Yeah. You're gonna pay a penalty for ten years or less, then once it goes into the eleventh year, if you did something for a twenty-year loan, after you start in the eleventh year, then there's no penalty, they said, for early payoff, is what they told us. That's all. The next item is resolution on 1511, acceptance of the road maintenance within the Pinocchio Falls Ranch subdivision. This is, you have the resolution in your packet. The roads accepted for maintenance are Darling Bell at one point two miles, Queen Lillian at point five eight miles, and King Peter at point two miles. You have the letter from Mr. Moore that they've met the road standards. We do have a plat of them in the planner's office. He's looked at all that. So...
We'll need to sign the plat also, right?
No, this was an original plat that was done, and they were accepted by the commission. This is just accepted for maintenance. That's the other item we'll speak of if we add to the agenda. But these are all, they've all been looked at, they meet our criteria, and they're ready to be accepted in to the inventory.
Will you be there?
The next item is a resolution in support of Senate Bill 199 of the 2013 Legislative Session regarding an appropriation to benefit the ranch tour of the Gila. This is the other item that we've been asked. Currently, Senate Bill 199 is put out by Senator Morales as the sponsor of that bill, and it appropriates one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Tour de Hila to increase the marketing, public relations, and advertising. This money is flowing through the New Mexico Economic Development Department. And so far, it's been going through legislature very well. Hasn't hit any hiccups yet, as far as I know, as far as yesterday. Jack's been tracking it. It's, he talked with Steve Montano from the New Mexico Economic Development Department last week, and he said that he's very optimistic that this will pass and it'll help him advertise more, to bring more people and grow the race to become bigger than it has every year. So I think it's a very good resolution for the commission to support, to bring that money down here, because that money will actually benefit this area. The next is a resolution for R 1313, a resolution in support of Senate Bill 80, House Bill 56, House Bill 100, and Senate Bill 219 of the 2013 Legislative Session, which are related to the funding of New Mexico fruits and vegetables for school meals, accelerated food growth in rural communities and development and promotion of New Mexico farmers' markets. This comes out of the Grant County Community, Grant County Food Policy Council that the commission had put together, previous commission had put together. They're continually watching bills that they feel will help, and that's what they're asking is that the commission support those bills going through, because we do have a lot of local farmers here that they're just trying to make it easier for the schools to buy from them and everybody else to use the local foods because you know how the quality is. Things we've talked about in the past that really hinder these groups is you get somebody that mass produces, a farm that mass produces lettuce, a local vendor can never undercut those people because the cost ratio, you know. And so they've always been trying to work on bills to make it easier for New Mexico farmers to get an advantage over these bigger out-of-state companies. And so that's kind of what this will do, is help out in that aspect, a lot of these bills. And that's what they're always looking for, because we do have a lot of farmers here locally.
Lisa, can you please briefly describe these three bills real quick?
So, House Bill 56 is built, put forth to support food production in rural communities. It's being proposed by the Rio Grande Economic Development Corporation out of Albuquerque. They have a model called the Mixing Bowl, and they are currently, it's a USDA-funded project that started in Albuquerque. Since its inception two years ago, they have averaged, working with two hundred and fifty entrepreneurs a year on value-added food production. This bill, they estimate will generate a hundred and twenty new companies, two hundred and ninety-eight new jobs, and about five and a half million dollars in revenue over the next few years. The bill is one point four million dollars over four years, and that is to help the Rio Grande Community Development Corporation bring the Mixing Bowl project into some rural communities in the state. And one of the target communities for this bill is Grant County. We've been working with, on these issues, related issues, in partnership with the co-op for the last couple of years, and we think the Mixing Bowl project would be a great thing to come to Grant County. And we're hopeful that that funding would come through the commons, through the commercial kitchen incubator there. So, and then House Bill 100 and Senate Bill 219 is the farmers' market. They're asking for eighty-five thousand dollars to support marketing efforts for farmers' markets across the state. We currently have two farmers' markets here in Grant County, the one out in Membres and the one here in Silver City. They generate, together, they generate over fifty thousand dollars in sales every year. The Membres market has averages about nine vendors, about sixty-five customers per market day. And the Silver City market averages about twenty vendors and several hundred customers on market days. So additional marketing would just really help the vendors increase their business. And I would just also note that I don't have this figure for the Membres market, but the Silver City market also is generating between thirty-five hundred and four thousand dollars a year in EBT sales for low-income folks. So the more marketing we can have around encouraging folks to use their EBT cards at the markets, good for people to be able to buy fresh produce from the market, always is also an additional way for farmers' markets, vendors to get sales. And then the last one is Senate Bill 80, which is going to provide funding to have New Mexico growers to be able to provide fresh fruits and vegetables to the schools. And in the state of New Mexico, we have one in four kids don't know where their next meal is coming from, and so they depend heavily on school meals to get enough to eat, and being able to have fresh fruits and vegetables in those meals is really important, and it's also a great way to support New Mexico producers. New Mexico is a ninety-eight percent net producing state, which means ninety-eight percent of what we produce goes outside. New Mexico is a 98% net producing state, which means 98% of what we produce goes outside the state and 98% of what we consume comes in from outside. So this is one of multiple strategies to try to keep those food dollars in the state and benefit kids at the same time.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions?
That's all.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item. The next item is Resolution R 1314, authorizing the county manager to approve and execute professional service agreements and amendments for the purpose of carrying out the mission of the juvenile probation parole office. This is kind of our stab about what we had talked about at last meeting. The commission talked about trying to give some authority over to me so that didn't have to call special meetings or I could authorize these agreements and then bring them back in front of you for ratification, similar to what we did earlier. Abby put this together based on what we heard last time. Didn't know if, my question I guess is, do you just want it for JPPO or do you want it for all? That's.
Or do we want it for all? I thought we did.
So, yeah, and so that would be just some language we'd have to change because right now it's just authorizing for JPPO.
I don't know what you mean by that.
Professional services? Whether it's DWI or JPPO or.
We don't put a number, an amount, cap on that.
You had 20,000 in here. That's probably a good starting point, huh?
Hell, sure.
Nope, okay. If he goes wild, we'll lower it.
Yeah, spending the money. $20,000 increments, here we go.
Is it really, let me tell you, the worst thing that can ever happen is when you're begging for forgiveness.
Yeah.
It's the worst thing.
No, I just got to make sure, yeah. So, okay, so we'll amend that to say all at 20,000, keep it at 20,000. I have a couple items, resolutions, that, one of them, Tracy's here from the COG. The COG has asked, and this is kind of, was an item that got to us.
This hasn't been in your packet.
It's not in your packet, no. I've got it to talk to you about today to see if you want me to go ahead and add it. The first one, the COG, is it's designating Tyrone Mutual Domestic Water CA, I don't know what, CA.
Consumer.
Consumers, I was stuck on the C. Serving area as a colonia within Grant County. And Tracy can tell you what, why they need to have this. They're very pressed that they can't wait till our next meeting in March to get this done is why they brought it.
Okay, hi Tracy.
Hi. So Prisilla was approached to put together a colonias infrastructure grant application for the Tyrone Mutual Domestic Water Consumers Association. And they, when we were putting together the application, we realized that only the Tyrone townsite was designated as a colonias. The actual service area for the Water Consumers Association isn't included in that. So as part of their application, they need to be a designated colonias, which entails inadequate water, wastewater or housing infrastructure. So the county has the authority to designate the Tyrone service area as a colonias and that would allow them to apply for funding under this grant. And I think they, I think she said that they're applying to hook into the regional water system or intending to apply for that funding.
Okay. And this is the group that's passed the townsite, between the townsite and the mine, right? Where they've had the water issues before and the sanded wells that they spoke with Senator Morales about?
Yeah, I think it's Camino Pobeka, which is just north of the Tyrone townsite.
Oh, the one.
Yeah.
Any questions? Thanks Tracy. So we'll go ahead and add that.
Please do.
To the agenda so that they can designate, and the commission's the ones that designate. And then another is, we just received kind of a pressing, the New Mexico Environment Department is getting ready to consider a proposed copper rule change. And we've been asked if we could, the commission could do, pass a resolution and sign a letter supporting the proposed rule changes.
Is it a change or is it additional requirements that are required?
Well, I guess it's a change to the rule because it's adding additional requirements. My understanding of it from the public hearings that have happened that I've attended to at Western is currently there's no, there's no water quality requirements on the mines. There's not a lot that they know how to live within. They take care of the water, but there's not a strict set of rules. So what this proposed rule change does is sets up parameters that they have to live within for the groundwater quality as they mine. The toughest rules that there are in the country, as my understanding from the other states that have these rules in place, one of the concerns that were brought forth during those public hearings by people in attendance were the wanting the liners under the tailings dams because currently they're not lined with a synthetic liner, membrane. They pack in a clay and they, and then they start to fill them with the waste rock, waste ore, the crushed material and water from the mining process and then they pump off the processed water and send it back up into the system again. Concerns that were brought forward were that they wish to have those dams lined because this doesn't call for them to be lined. During that meeting, Freeport spoke that that would be over $100 million to do one dam, similar to pound seven. For us, we line the landfill, so one cell at the landfill, which is.
$700,000.
It's, yeah, it's anywhere between $400,000 to $700,000 depending on how you have to do it, where the groundwater is and everything. And that's the size of a football field approximately, whereas you're talking pound seven is probably 40 times larger, 50 times larger. I mean, it's a very large.
So currently they have no requirements whatsoever, so this is.
They have no requirements on, they do the testing of their groundwaters to make sure that they don't raise levels, but there's not a good set, strict of requirements they have to live in for mining and this gives them a set of requirements to live within. Freeport spoke at the meeting, they had some input, so did some other groups have input with the Environment Department in making the rule change. They spoke at the meeting that they are more restrictive than others, but they're willing to live within those.
Freeport said that?
Freeport said that, that because it does give them a clear playing field that they have to fall within that right now they don't have, there's not a clear set of guidelines and this does give them that.
So this is a rule being put forth by the Environment Department?
It's being put forth by the Environment Department with input from stakeholders, like Freeport had some input, some environmental groups had some input, is my understanding, the Environment Department, there's been public input, public hearings here.
Because I know New Mexico Tech, Dr. Dan told me something about them, do you know what their role was?
I do not know what New Mexico Tech's role was in it. I know that they've had meetings all over the state, public hearings, and now it's getting ready to go in front of the Water Quality Control Commission to have their blessing to go forward and put this act in place. And so that's what Freeport has come and asked, that they get support from leaders in the communities. They're asking all the communities throughout the state, not just Grant County, to support that this rule-making go forward so that it gives mining a clear guideline to live within in the state. The act is probably about a half inch thick, so I've looked through it, I haven't read through the whole thing, looked for key points in it. When we were talking at the public hearing, they gave it out to us, the proposed rule change. It doesn't seem to, from my side, I've never, as a county, we've never had anybody call and said they've had any problem with water based on the mines, but not everybody calls us. I don't know if the Environment Department's had any issues, but.
At least not from the table.
Yeah. So it does give them, like I said, some clear guidelines and they just like the support that that continues to go forward and it gives them those guidelines so that they can continue to mine.
It's a pleasure. Let's put it on the agenda.
So I put together a resolution with those topics. And then wanted to discuss whether or not we have the Loma Verde subdivision that we've done. We've received a survey back on that. This is the one that Mr. Sandoval continues to come to the commission and we've been dealing with other residents out there, but Mr. Sandoval is now the lead resident, has been doing a good job working with our planning department. We've gotten the property surveyed. Ms. Robinson has looked at the language on the plat and been working, has some input on that. We'll let her talk about what her questions are on that. And then we'll decide if you want to put it on the agenda to go forward. Sorry about that.
Well, they're almost ready, I think, and Anthony looked at the plat and thought it was accurate, looked good. I did have some concerns about the language for the dedication on the plat. This one's a little different because for some reason they didn't dedicate the roads during the subdivision process, which normally what happens is on the plat, on the final plat during the process of the subdivision approval, they'll put language on there that says something about dedicating the roads, the easements and all that for public purpose, for public use. And I don't know why that didn't happen with this particular subdivision, but I guess it didn't. So my concern is that I think we need to have that dedication language on this plat because that's the whole purpose of it, is for the dedication and for the acceptance by the commission for, for purpose, for public use. And I just want it to be clear that it's for public use and not acceptance of maintenance.
Because it's a two-step.
Right, it's two steps and you have to be careful when we're not in the subdivision process because that two-step acceptance is not as clear.
So do you think we're not prepared for this being?
I'm going to talk with the surveyor who prepared it today. She said she'll be in and we'll talk. One other concern I have is whether or not, this is going to sound pretty cumbersome, but since right now the owners are not the developer, the owners are all the owners. So I'm a little concerned as to whether or not they should all sign the dedication on here, which might cause them a little footwork, but in the end, in 10 years from now, we're all gone and somebody has, somebody has a dispute over this.
We've been to those.
If it's on there, then there's just no question that all of the property owners that are budding the roads at issue, or actually in this case, all the property owners in the subdivision, I think, should agree to this. And I think we already have a petition, so I don't think it's a, I don't think anybody's disputing this. I think it'd be just a problem to get it on here.
These people have really worked hard at this.
Right.
A lot of work, let's do it right, let's help them to do it right so that they don't.
I know that might be a little bit of a hassle for them. Another alternative that I thought about is I am going to look at the petition that they've prepared, that they've already all signed and see what language is in that. It still probably wouldn't be the best purpose.
Do it right.
Okay.
I like your concern.
Okay.
I know they're in a hurry.
We'll just get it all done, right?
But we.
Or not, not right, in the best way, I think.
Yeah, the best, the best way.
Because there's certainly different ways.
We can do this in March.
Think we can do this for first meeting in March?
Let's set a goal and do it in March.
Just do that.
If they didn't have any problem getting the signatures the first time around for the petition, then I don't see why we would have an issue. Because the surveyor and I can work out the language very quickly. It's just a matter of getting it around and getting everybody signed, then they can present it to you all in one document.
Sounds good. So we'll do that on that one. So.
It was just the main road that I did and I didn't know that we were going to do the two side roads. So I did go and redo the estimate for those two roads and I sent it to Anthony, so I just wanted to make sure that Lonier, I don't know if he's had a test to give Lonier, make sure I'm aware that there's actually more cost to that project than the first estimate that I got done.
Did they add homeowners to them?
I don't know. Yeah, it does, as you'll see the plat, those are side roads that come up and cul-de-sac out, so you're picking up those people at the end of the cul-de-sac.
And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that that's really more concerning the second part, the first part of accepting the right-of-way, we're less worried about, but we will get with Anthony on that.
We want to add the right-of-way and both the side roads too.
Yeah, no, and they're on the plat.
You're right. We can accept the dedication without working out the details of the maintenance.
Okay, yeah.
And then, once the roads are ready, how.
Then we do the maintenance.
Yeah, right. No, and that's, to make that clear, this is just the acceptance of the public dedication, so these roads will become a public road, not necessarily a county-maintained public road, it's just so they are a public road, then we can proceed down the process of the improvement district for them that they wish to go.
Let's just get it right and soon it'll pop.
Yep, we will.
This next part's got to be the worst part of being a county commissioner, right here.
The indigent claims?
Yes. The indigent burial.
Yes, and that's what we have on the commission meeting is the indigent burial. We have one burial with Toronto's funeral homes and under the indigent policy, we're allowed to pay up to $600 to offset the cost of an indigent burial. And an indigent burial is someone that has no next of kin, no family has come forward to claim the body. And so in the past, what they have done is they perform a service and bury them at the pauper cemetery or they have the option to, if they wish to, to cremate them and then tune the ashes there at the pauper cemetery, out at Fort Baird. So, and then the next item is the indigent claims. There's 1,339 claims totaling $681,313.06. Of those claims, 1,309 totaling $592,295.53 are out of the sole community provider piece. The other 30 claims are out of county, which are indigent, and those are the $89,017.53. Just a piece of information for you on the indigent claims, in case, I don't know if you've heard. Currently, there's, with the sole community provider payments, what happens is money goes up from the counties to the state, the state then matches that with federal dollars to send that back down to those sole community provider hospitals that are three to one match. There's been some talk about the formula had an error in it that the state was using to send those monies back. And so they're trying to decide if some hospitals have been overpaid or not and if they've been overpaid, how do they recoup those monies back and send them back to the federal government? So currently, we've talked with Mayor Marshall, who's also works for the hospital. Currently, the indigent payment, or the sole community provider payments have been put on hold and haven't been sent down. The last quarter's payment was not sent down to the hospital while they're figuring all this out. I've had discussions with Mr. Stewart about it from the hospital as well and he said they're watching. They don't feel like the hospital will take a large hit for that, that it may be a smaller portion that they get that would be fine, they could handle that. The one concern that I had when speaking with them is the current bonds, the commission just issued the $10 million in bonds and they're looking at another $24 million this year if we go forward. Mr. Stewart had the same concerns that if something doesn't work out with this, it really can't go forward with the $24 million until we find out the true revenue sources for the hospital, if that revenue source is going to be okay. The one benefit is if something does happen and those payments were to go away or things like that, the $10 million that's already issued has no penalty for early payoff, so you could turn around and pay that $10 million off with the money you receive from the sale of the bonds and there would be no penalty. So you could get out of the $10 million debt and not have to carry it if they had to go that route. But it doesn't look that way. It looks like it'll be figured out. There's some legislation out there doing different things. um, there's some legislation out there doing different things, um, so they're, they're trying to fix the problem and get it straightened out so everybody can get the money flowing back in, so, um, just to let you know that, 'cause you may hear that they're having financial problems with the hospital, they're not, as far as I know, it's just because of this miscalculation of formula that the state was using, um, everybody in the state may have to pay back some funds for the sole, for the hospital, sole community provider funds, so.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is county reports, and we'll start with Justin today.
Chairman, cast and commissioners, um, we've been pretty busy in the public works department, uh, we just, uh, got the new heating and cooling systems installed at the Limerick Center and also in Hila, uh, we also had the electrician to go ahead and set them up, so they're up and running now, so we should have no problems with the cooling this summer that we've had in the past, so hopefully that'll be, won't be an issue, um, also, like John said, we've been working at the conference center, we're doing, doing a lot of painting in the inside of the building, we painted all the front halls already done, uh, now we're painting the rear hall, we've painted the restrooms, we, we're actually, no, we're really trying to clean it up, like John said, that carpet would be really, real big, would really help over there because it really needs some new carpet in that building, um, also, like, we've also been busy working on the new jail, we did have some damage done to some of our smoke detectors there by an inmate along with the sprinkler, I've been talking with Karen Kelly with Southwest, I said, we're gonna get some smoke dec- detector cages put on them, so they'll be, be able to damage them, um, I know Joe, Joe's been having some issues with that over there, we had an inmate that was having some issues over there, so we've been fixing that, um, we're also receiving bids for a new trap machine out there at, at, for the shooting range, I have spoke to all three commissioners about that, um, I've spoke with, um, Ron Cook's been helping me out with that, and also I spoke with Corey Dalton, um, he, they have a shotgun club out there in Hurley, where they, when they just actually purchased a new, a trap machine out there, so I'm gonna get with him and see where they purchased it and see what kind of price we could get with that, so that's something we've been working on.
Is this a machine specific for the four-H group, or is that-
Well, it's gonna be for the shooting range itself, for the four-H club, but I mean, it's, the, for the range itself, it's staying at the range.
Good, I just wanna make sure.
Um, we've also, uh, we've received, we've received an awarded bid for the electrical work to be done here at the administration building, it was demanded electric to do the front, for the work we're gonna be doing here, um, also, like John said, I was working with W.H. Pacific to, to help get the state grant submitted for the apron of the Phase Three out there at the airports, we've been working with them a lot on that, I also have Jane Dusseto coming down from the, the New Mexico Department of Transportation Aviation Division, she's gonna be here February twenty-seventh, we're gonna meet with her, I'm gonna have a meeting with her for the, our CIP projects we have laid out, I can give you guys a copy of those, I'm not sure if you guys do have those, but I'll make sure you guys get a copy of our plans for that, um, also, I've been working on, I'm trying to get the retrofitting of the courthouse lighting, um, PNM has an incentive program going right now, it started in October, um, there's one vendor locally, it's a Hilo Valley Electric that's in the program, but I spoke with John about it, because, um, what they're doing now, they're, the lighting systems are gonna be doing away with the T-twelves, which are the larger fluorescent light bulbs, and they're going to a smaller, the T-eights now, and they're gonna, actually, the T-twelves are gonna be obsolete, they're no longer gonna be selling those pretty soon, like, the next few years, so, uh, PNM's giving incentive program to help you lower your, get a rebate, which is, you know, they'll give you about close to six thousand dollars of your cost of what your, your plan is gonna be to fix it, so it's something to look into to try to get that done, it's something we're gonna have to do regardless, because the courthouse does have the old lighting in there, they have none, they have no new lighting, so we're gonna have to eventually get it done over there, um, I've also, for the fairgrounds, I've already ordered the hog pens, the two-hundred hog pens and the seventy-five hundred square feet of square tubing that need to be done, um, I got those in order already, they'll be here next week, both of them, if you have any questions?
Any questions for Justin?
Where are we with banning cages?
You know, again, I've still been working on that, I still need to find a spot, I guess I need to really sit down with you and get down and see where we wanted to put them.
You're busy with baseball season starting next week.
Yeah, I know, we, me and you have talked about a couple spots there, and I guess we're just really need to sit, sit or snap to see where we're gonna do it.
Okay.
And then, I don't have anything else on that, I don't, like I said, we'll just find a spot.
Okay. I guess the, the shooting range, they have a, a, a want wish list-
Yes, I have.
-that's coming to John, I hope it came to John first.
And I have.
Well, they need to, they need to bring it to John.
Yeah, I've heard about it, actually I haven't seen it, I heard about it, I haven't-
Yeah, it's similar issues besides the, the skeet shooting.
Okay, and do, and normally when they do approach us with stuff, I mean, we've, we've done, worked with them very well and whatever they need out there, so, I have no issues working with them.
Quite a bit of money in there, like, okay, thank you very much, Justin.
Earl? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, uh, we finished that low water crossing as part of the LGRF program over there on Mahogany Drive off of Roseville, uh, the guys did a great job on that thing, it should keep that thing from washing out every year. Uh, I turned in the certified volleys and I'll get Angela to add the penal southwest roads, we should have it before the next commission meeting for approval, um, we've been, we're patching them, but Southwest takes their plat down every winter to do routine maintenance on that thing, so it's been down for two or three weeks, hopefully it's gonna be back up Monday, I know there's a lot of patching complaints, uh, that I've got laying on my desk, and so as soon as they get that off that back up, we'll, we'll jump back on patching, um, the city is supposed to drop this water line out in front of the building, hopefully today or tomorrow, so as soon as they get that done, and then I'll move some guys over here and we'll start on the front of this building, and hopefully we'll get the east side of the building done by the time they get that electrical done, and as soon as they get that done, then we'll switch over to that other side, um, I'm working on the two thousand fourteen, thirteen, fourteen LGRF projects, I don't know if the commissioners have anything that they would like me to look at, um, I was doing some figuring today, and I talked to Anthony this morning before he left to go to his meeting, I really think that we're gonna have to start looking at some capital outlay money or some way else to find some money, uh, with the money I'm getting from the LGRF, now, I used to be able, when I first went to work here, I could do twenty to twenty-five miles, right now I can do three to five miles, and with over three hundred miles of, of paved roads, I mean, it's just a losing battle, and sooner or later, if we don't come up with some extra money from capital outlay or someplace else, uh, you guys are gonna have to really start digging in your pockets and coming up with a lot of money, uh, there's silver roads that hasn't been touched in the fourteen years that I've been here, and it's really starting to show, I mean, it's, like I said, it's just a losing battle anymore with the price of oil, uh, I'm already gonna have to, I've talked to John, I'm already gonna have to drop a road that we were planning on doing this year, because we, uh, the price of oil jumped up so much from the time I did this, these projects last year, uh, unless we come up with a bunch of money out, out of pocket to do it, so we're just gonna go ahead and drop, drop one road, uh, I did estimate it higher, next, next year, right now, the price of oil is at six hundred and forty-eight bucks a ton, uh, rebids again in May, but the price of oil is probably gonna be around seven hundred bucks, is where I'm guessing for a ton of oil on there, so, like I said, I'm fighting the losing battle trying to keep these roads maintained and keep up with the maintenance on them.
When's the road you dropping, Earl?
Uh, it'll be Galloge, I've took numbers, I'm dropping for this year that I wanna add it to two thousand-
Road history.
Thirteen.
Hey, hey, that's, that's-
So that's one of the roads I haven't been touched in fourteen years that I've been here.
I understand. How much is it?
Uh, to do it?
Yeah.
Uh, thirty, what did I tell you, John, thirty-five thousand.
What we're trying to- And, and like Earl said, just, I think over the last couple, two years, we've probably put over a hundred thousand dollars in general fund money towards the LGRF projects because he's come up short, and so we finished off those projects with general fund money so we could continue, and it just gets worse, and that number keeps growing.
While we stay so tight so we can do those kind of things at the end of the year.
And a lot of roads, like, for instance, Roseville, I was talking to Anthony, we're looking at a couple different things to try and get, there's about two miles that need to be completely redone, I mean, tore out and completely redone, and if I do that with the LGRF money, all that money is concentrated on that one road, and then we're not doing anything to any, any other roads on there, I mean, it's just, it's just getting bad.
Any questions, Earl?
Good job, Earl.
Thanks, man. Justin?
Chairman, commissioners, good morning, uh, we're, we're currently working on the last few warranty issues with the facility that are covered through FCI that were found on the walkthrough on December fourteenth, uh, other things in the facility are still under warranty from the companies that install them, so when we ever have problems, we go through the maintenance manuals and see if it's under warranty, then get with maintenance, get them to work on it, we are working with Justin on the sprinkler systems and the smoke detectors, we do charge the inmate with criminal damage to property and do charge them for the damage and what it costs to repair it, uh, we're gonna meet with the DA, and also, it's possible we could charge them with a felony, which that, which the smoke detector and the sprinklers are used to save lives, where if they're tampering with that, they're tampering with others' lives, so we could charge them with a felony, if we put that and the inmate rules the regulations, I think that'll stop them from doing it, because they'll know they'll pick up more charges from that, uh, we did hire six new detention officers, that'll put us at a full complement of thirty officers, uh, we do have a temporary assignment of a training officer, Bron Nagida, uh, he's currently doing the training, we did have a forty-hour officer basic training course, uh, we're talking with the jail association, with the Mexico Association of Counties, they give us an outline program, so Bron is currently doing that program, it's gonna give the new trainees up to a hundred and sixty hours of training before they start on the floor of the detention center, which I think is vital in carrying out their duties, that way they get a lot more training, a lot more experience and ease into the position rather than being thrown in there right-of-way. We are working with training our current officers also, today and Thursday, we're doing suicide training for an hour, uh, we are redoing our suicide protocol to fill any gaps we found, uh, so we can make sure that the inmates do not harm themselves, and also we can indicate which inmates are possible suicidal, so we could work with them and, and keep them safe. Um, also, we, we are doing training for our volunteers now, we do have various volunteers that go in, do GED classes, life skills, uh, Bible studies, religious services, but what we did now is they have to go through the screening process to go into the jail to work with the inmates, and they also have to attend an hour and a half orientation class that kind of gives them the dos and dotes in the jail, what to do, what, when the situation occurs, they have to go through that hour and a half class before they enter the facility, uh, I think Thursday will be the last class, and we'll have all our volunteers, uh, going through that orientation and signing off on that, if any new volunteers come in, they have to go through that orientation also, it gives them the rules and regs that tells them that they're subject to search and monitoring, they have to sign in, sign out, and gives them the rules of the facility, I think it'll, it'll benefit us and have the volunteers and the facility and the staff on the same page.
Any questions for Justin?
Joseph, do you do any kind of monitoring of what the volunteers or their interaction with the inmates?
Yes, we do monitor that, there is a camera, and there's also speaker boxes within that room, which you could press and actually listen, listen to what's going on in the room, we do give them a radio, we do give them a panic button in case there's any problems, we're looking at switching out the camera from the celli port to that program room, which will give us a better visual of the whole room, uh, we have, kind of have three cameras in the celli port, which is overkill, the company said, so by switching cameras, it shouldn't do any security issues in the celli port, uh, what I did is kind of streamlined the process of volunteers, each volunteer group, no matter how many volunteers there are, will have one leader, that's the group leader, and they communicate with me, I communicate with them back, I'm gonna have the lieutenants and myself sit in some of the classes, uh, we do have circles that they talk about different things, we do sit on that already, and just, just to make sure that the volunteers are providing what the specific program is for, and, and don't kind of outlier, bring anything else in, and keeping a better track, and I think this program will work for volunteers a lot better.
Good job. Are the volunteers safe?
Yes.
For safe.
I know there was an issue about liability, and I said, you know, if you slip on the ice outside our front door, we're gonna take care of you the same way we take care of you, if you, if something happens at the jail, they are safe, the inmates really enjoy their classes, uh, we do have a classification system that screens the inmates by, by their crime, by their age, by their gang member, if they've been in prison or not, so the people that do go to the classes have already been screened through the classification process and looked at, see if they get along with each other, so the volunteers are working with those inmates that, that have access to that program, that are allowed to, and the inmates of higher custody that will never see that program, or mental health people won't see that program, or people that are suicidal won't see their program, so we do, we do have, we try and give as much access to the inmates for, for different programs, but because of the classification system and the safety and security of the facility, we only allow certain inmates to go to those classes, and the others, we just give them the reading material and the rec and, and give as much as possible within keeping everyone safe.
Yeah, and I wanna point out, 'cause I've had the question from the public, people that are in our facility for murder are not being turned loose with an individual from outside and left alone, that Joseph's guys don't do that. And that's, as he spoke, the screening, um, we do make sure that our inmates, as well as our officers and the public, are safe at all times in our facility.
Mr. Assessor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, getting ready to send out notice of values for 2013, uh, just got with Peregrine, who's the printer, uh, making sure that we meet all the regulations, um, there'll be some changes this year, and as we get closer to sending those out, I'll go over them, there's no need to really go into it right now, but, uh, I'll have more information on those as we go forward, but I do wanna thank, thank my staff for 2012, I think we've done a great job, I put together that reappraisal plan in 2012, uh, we're on that, and we'll continue to be on that until we're done, uh, other than that, I, I attended the Association of Counties Legislative, uh, Saturday, uh, meeting, um, uh, this past Saturday, and, uh, just, there's a whole stack of bills that, that affect county government, here they are, if anybody wants to take a look at them, uh, uh, the priorities were annual delinquent property tax sales, which is, I know we're, we're tracking that as well, uh, so that they, they have a delinquent tax sale annually, of course, the fireworks ban, uh, you know, given the authority for counties to, at least in drought situations, I don't wanna go into that, I'm not, uh, I'm not really, uh, you know, want people to think that we're against fireworks or banning fireworks, uh, affidavits on sale on residential property that was requiring property owners to, uh, submit the sale of that, uh, that does not look good at this point, um, so, um, the other one is changes to public records, which right now allows, uh, for, uh, fees, uh, to increase depending on the amount of, of, uh, in information you're asking from the public, uh, so, again, I have a whole stack of bills here, uh, volunteer fire department pension, uh, is gone, is looking at, uh, House Bill two seventy-five, which is gonna increase it to hun, two hundred and fifty dollars, but that's for if you reach, reach age fifty-five and you have over twenty-five years of experience, so that's gonna go up, um, there's, there's a lot of other things, I know, uh, some that, uh, the public means, uh, agenda seven-two hours in advance, I know we're, we're tracking that pretty well, I think, uh, at the, uh, meeting with the thirty-three counties, I, I would beg to say there was at least twenty-eight counties that, uh, were against that, and on the executive board, I represent, uh, Doniana County, Sierra County, Hidalgo Plant, and Luna County, and, and those members on those boards also asked me, uh, to, uh, not to support that, and so I did that, um, other than that, uh, we're having, um, weekly meetings on bills, checking bills and legislation, uh, through conference calls, and so I'll have another one this Thursday, and, and, uh, there at eleven o'clock, so maybe at the, not this Thursday meeting, but the meeting after that, uh, maybe give you some, another update, I know that the, uh, district is gonna have a meeting in April, April ninth, uh, to wrap up the legislative process and what was good and what was bad about it, um, so there'll be some invitations sending out to, of course, the managers in, in our, in our five districts and our five counties, uh, to managers and commissioners and road department personnel and detention center and sheriff's department, just so, to get an overview of what happened this legislative session and, and to see where, uh, you know, we can improve as far as going in next year with anything that affects revenues in, in county government, so unless you have any questions, that's all I have.
Any questions for the session, John? Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, I don't know if you saw, Brett and I were on a conference call yesterday, the chairman, um, about, um, we've been meeting with the local group about legislative priorities as well, and they brought up a bill to us that is the electronic, um, property tax values, that you delivered electronically if somebody requests it, um, and they asked us what the effect would be on us, um, and so I don't know if our system knows the ability to generate the electronic, um, notice of value, and if that would save us money or cost us more time, if you've looked at that.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and John, um, I think if you look at it as a whole, yeah, it would save us a considerable amount of money if we were able just electronically, but if you look at this bill and read it real carefully, it's more, right now, it's if people request to have it that way, uh, then we can do that, uh, now, um, I think I'm sending out nineteen thousand parcels of mail, uh, so you go, you look at that, and if we can cut that in half, um, obviously it's gonna save us some, some money.
Save like half a road out of Galloge, I mean.
However you wanna calculate it, Mr. Chairman, but, but I, I, I think on the other hand, though, it, it just depends on, uh, you know, there's a, there's a contested period, the last thirty days, so, you know, that electronic mail, I mean, there'll have to be some things worked out, but yeah, I, I mean, I don't have any problem with that, I think if you have people that own property in Grant County that live in, you know, Minnesota, California or somewhere else, and can get those electronically right-of-way, you know, it probably saves us, uh, some money in the long run, and if it, I, I know some counties do that already in the state of New Mexico, um, so, you know, if it, if it gets to that point, I'd be more than glad to support, that'd make it easier for everybody.
And does it, does it include the tax bill as well?
Yes.
So we can do the tax, because that would save us a ton.
That's correct, it's, it's the notice of value and the tax bill.
Yeah, no, well, and the return mail.
Right, well, and I, and I think, the point is now, is that if you look at technology in a way, it costs a lot to get it, but in the long run, when you're using it, that's where the savings are, and I think that, uh, you know, us going to tighter, uh, the- And I think that, you know, us going to tighter, the type of system that would be able to handle that, I think that's good in the long run because then, you know, our investments are gonna be paid for in the long run.
That's the reason we get it.
Anything else, any other questions? Sir?
Thank you very much, Mr. Assessor.
Mr. Assessor?
Chairman, commissioners, as you stated, that does include us being able to send tax bills electronically. We have already been doing that upon request from the taxpayers. We have people living outside the country that, that's the only way they have. I mean, we still have had to mail them to comply with the law to their addresses, but even their mailing addresses, many times, they just don't get it. And electronically, they've been able to get it. So we're really supporting the assessor's bill on that as far as the treasurer's affiliate as well and also getting their support on our request on those. Not only is that bill that's up there for the tax sale every year in every county, but as part of that, it's also allowing the treasures to collect for the state once they have the installment contracts in place. Currently, we're not allowed to collect. That has to go directly to the state. And, you know, one of the issues with that is that by allowing us to collect it, we're also allowed to collect partial payments, which previously the state gave us a directive that had to be paid in full or nothing. Well, by being able to collect partial payments, we're able to, what we do is we would collect it, what we would do is collect it, we would keep the tax portion of it, and the penalty and interest does go to the state. Previously, once this passes, previously, the state would collect the money and they would keep the money until it was completely paid in full. Then they would decide, okay, how much were taxes and then send it back to the counties. And this way, the counties will get it. As soon as we collect it, within the next, within the month, we do our distribution. The schools and the municipalities will all get their tax money right now instead of sometimes years of having to wait. And that'll help part of this, the little report that I gave you guys in writing, currently we're at sixty-four percent collection for the 2012 tax year. Five hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars of that is for debt service and the three million, sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and three is for operational. So like I said, we're at sixty-four percent collection, which is fairly good considering we just, we just started actually in November collecting. There's still two million dollars outstanding, which will, probably around May, would be about when we end up collecting most of that. Over the last ten years, we're at a ninety-five percent collection rate, so we're doing pretty good. And I also wanna thank the staff for working as hard as they have and it's been a trying time. We've had the State Taxation Revenue Property Tax Division in our office trying to work on the tax sale, which is currently tentatively scheduled for April the fourth. And we're, we've been collecting a lot of those tentative sales, but there's still some out there that are a little slower. There are some issues that they're trying to work out and we're not really sure exactly where we stand because, you know, we can't, we have no way of knowing what they're gonna take off the sale if otherwise, we have, you know, quite a bit of property still out there, but we don't know what their criteria is as to whether they're gonna go ahead and offer it up at the tax sale or not. So they may end up canceling it if they don't have sufficient properties for the tax sale. That's one of the issues with the bill that's up there, that they, even if you only have one property, there should still be that action by the state to go ahead and have the sale, take care of it, and that way, you know, we're not taking the opportunity of losing anything that's out there. So unless you have any other questions or...
Do you have right now, do you know?
Not really, because...
You gotta guess.
Well, we had sixty individuals and then we had one enterprise that had hundreds of parcels that they're working on trying to get it under control and trying to, but then again, like I said, a lot of those parcels that are in that subdivision, the state is not wanting to even look at them or address them because they say, well, that's not marketable. And I don't know what exactly their criteria is. Basically, the guy that's out here doing the review is the one that decides whether it's auctioned off or not.
And that's marketable is what he's talking about?
That's what he says.
Is marketable meaning has, 'cause I know when you buy something from a tax lien standpoint, you don't clear superior liens, so there may be some out there that are, have substantially more liens on them than they're worth. I don't know.
Well, most of these, it's, the issue is that they feel that, they've been out there and looked at the land. If it's in a ravine or something like that, they just feel like it's not something that they wanna, you know, deal with. You know, and we don't, I mean, I really haven't been able to get an answer from Property Tax Division yet. They said they're, of course, with the legislature and everything going, they're kinda tied up, but we just wanna know. So what happens to these parcels if they're not, if they're not sold? I mean, something should be given to us in writing from Property Tax Division so that the assessor can go out and take them off the property, off the tax rolls.
Assessor, you have to work.
Yeah, because, and that's one of the reasons to have the sales, because we're, you know, if we're giving you numbers that, you know, we've billed X number of dollars for property taxes, well, that doesn't mean we're gonna get a hundred percent collections if there's items out there that aren't marketable or we probably won't ever, ever collect. So that's, that's, that also brings up the issue of, in April, we're gonna have probably the, not the final, but a meeting of the manufactured home, mobile home group for the treasurer's affiliate to finalize and we'll be bringing before you the proposed ordinance so we can, you know, we've been talking to Randy about it and trying to iron out the issues of who, when, where we've met with Gilbert Hilton as far as the code enforcement and trying to work out a system that we have to have better control. Because if we, if we have all these mobile homes that are out there but aren't, that we wanna say livable or what have you, we're creating a false sense of, that there's tax value out there and we're not able to collect it because it's not, it's abandoned or what have you. So those are some of the things we're trying to address.
Okay. Randy, who's...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I think when you look at, when you're talking about marketable property, I mean, he's right. When you, when you have these properties that either are too small to build on, where you don't have enough to put a septic or whatever it is, or in a ravine, or the only one it's really valuable to is maybe the neighbor. And so, and those types, they don't believe it's worth spending their revenue or their, you know, just put up a sale if they know it's not gonna sell on the open market. So I think, you know, we have a lot of properties like that. I know that, you know, the, you know, the solution would be to, you know, have a surveyor, you know, on county payroll and finding all these properties that we don't even know who owns and looking at all that revenue. I know Santa Fe County did it and they brought in five million dollars of tax, of taxes just based on property that's out there that we don't even know who owns besides these ones that are on delinquent sale. So it's those properties that are either adjacent to highway, to the highway front edge where you can't do nothing with it anyway. And so that's what they're talking about as far as when Steve talks about unmarketable because nobody will buy them or if they're so small that it doesn't mean anything to anybody just to go and buy it unless the neighbor who had, you know, a house next door was able to pick it up. But that's possible. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Are those sixty that we started with when you first left the stack for us to come up with a minimum bid, we're down to about twenty. So we've collected almost forty of those.
Anything else, if you have any questions? All right, Sheriff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Over the month of January, we had three hundred and twelve calls for service. We investigated twenty-four motor vehicle collision reports. We did have an uprising on burglaries that we're currently working. As you can read in the newspaper, we're trying to put out as many of the areas that are getting hit. It's not just solely one area, it's throughout the county. The city's getting hit pretty hard. So we, we're trying to do different things to try and get these people that are doing it. We have ideas, we have leads, it's just putting it all together and picking these people The other thing I wanted to report is I did send some staff to training last week dealing with Desert Snow, which is a drug interdiction training. These officers went up to Albuquerque and had a very extensive training. We're gonna be targeting our drug, drug issues that we're dealing with in the county and I think having this training is gonna be beneficial to the county residents. I also sent some to Los Cruces to do car seat, it's a car seat clinic. They're now certified trained to install car seats, do, to help out the community in properly installing car seats and how to make sure that the kids are secured properly in their vehicles. I think it's a plus 'cause a lot of parents, even me as a parent, sometimes we don't seat them right and strap them in right, and even a minor collision will cause damage to the child if they're not properly secured. So we're gonna start doing that for the community. I did send three guys, or actually one, one of my, one male and two of my female deputies to do this training. So, you know, I wanna put that out to the community that we're gonna start interacting with that. I also met with the school, with Silver High School, not just me, the city and the state police. We're gonna start training in the schools. We don't wanna encounter any issues as far as what's happened in the other parts of the country as far as active shooters and stuff like that. So we're gonna start interacting a little bit more with the schools and getting prepared. Hopefully, never, we never encounter that, but we just wanna make sure that we're on the same page with the school and how we're gonna operate and do things with them. You know, I'm really pleased that Silver High has accepted, or actually Silver School District has accepted us to be able to utilize our schools and interact with them. We've been working with Cobree quite a bit and now Silver's come on board, so I'm happy to say that we'll be able to work with them. So other than that, I have nothing else to report unless you have any questions.
No questions for Sheriff?
Thanks for being proactive in our school. That's really important to all of us.
Thank you, Sheriff. Bob?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioner. I have nothing to report.
Okay.
You know, I'm not gonna say that.
Take a break for him.
Yeah, easy, easy. No, just wanted to bring up, in March, are currently our meetings that we have scheduled, the first meeting in March is that week of the fifteenth, which is, that ends in the fifteenth, which is the last week of the legislative session. Based on our conference call yesterday, things have been moving real slow, so I think it's gonna pick up to where you start to see the midnight meetings, you know, one AM, two AM, committee meetings, hearing things. So it's probably gonna become very busy where we're gonna have to go back up and be sitting vigil in these hearings as some of these bills go through. So we're probably gonna, I guess, asking to move the meetings to the following week, which will be the nineteenth and twenty-first, I believe. And so we'll just have those meetings in March, just the nineteenth and the twenty-first instead of the other regularly scheduled meetings so that we can be up there for that last week of session just because of all these bills that are moving through. A lot of them haven't hit the floor for votes on both sides and gone to the governor, and so that's what you're gonna see is a real push here in the last few weeks to process. You know, Randy showed you that big stack that he has and that's just what affects government, it's not everything. And so you're also looking at amendments that are happening in these that will start to affect us, and so we'll, we'll be vigilant there. So we'll probably be headed back up next week and then the following two weeks after that. Just depends on committees. We've been tracking that. I will print out for the commissioners, the tracking list and get that to you. Put that in your boxes so that you can see some of the bills that we're currently tracking and where they are, some of the comments on them from legislature. We're, Joseph mentioned the training officer. That's something we just recently tried out. I think it'll be good for his department. It's something that we've seen that we really need to, in all detention centers, it's a push to make sure their training is there. So that'll be good. That's something that we're doing on a temporary basis to try it out and as we go into budget process, we may look to see if we can create that position of a training officer so that we can continue to stay on track with the training. I know that would make Abby happy, a lot less worries if we've got a good training protocol in place. And we're reiterating it to the, to the staff out there instead of, right now, it's left on Joseph and the administrative staff to try and go around as well as everything else they're doing, as you mentioned. So I think this'll be a good program. We are getting ready to go into union negotiations, April fifteenth through the nineteenth week is what we've currently slated. Our current union contract ends June thirtieth. In the past, we've always been able to negotiate a new one and bring it in front of the commission before for the benefit of Commissioner Hall, 'cause he hasn't been through this. We've typically have been able to negotiate in about three days timeframe, haven't had a lot of change, mostly been language change. We go through negotiations and we'll bring it in front of, the union then takes it in front of their membership for ratification, then it'll come in front of the commission for the final ratification. So those are, that's one thing that we are going into. So I'll be putting together my negotiating team, with myself and Abby Robinson. The sheriff has asked to be on it. We get five individuals. We'll probably have representation from the detention center on our negotiating team and then see who else we need. I don't foresee it being a hard negotiation just because nothing, no issues have really come up throughout the year, so might be just some more language changes, but we'll The, they spoke about the front of the building. We're getting ready to work on that, get that done. Also, the legislative capital appropriation has been put in to do the vault for the sheriff as well as some remodels on this building. Last we heard, if everything goes through well, we should get about four hundred thousand dollars. So we'll have to make some modifications to the original design because I think the original design of the vault that, based on some training the sheriff went to, if it had everything that he wished he could have, was three quarters of a million dollars. So we'll probably have to scale back some because we don't have the extra three hundred and fifty thousand dollars laying around to make up the difference if we get to four hundred thousand. So that will be taken care of. We should be getting the cars in any day for the senior services, the new escapes that we ordered from Lolly Ford. Those will be that I, that I four engine, so they will be the four-cylinder, two-point-oh liter that gets the, about twenty-seven miles to a gallon. So those should be a very good vehicle for them. And they'll be four-wheel drive, so they won't have the issues when we have the snows of getting meals out to the homebound individuals. So I think that's, unless you want more?
Oh, no.
If you have some more, I can keep going, but I think those are the main high points of what we've been going through here. I've given the commissioners the pool cash reports to show where we're at there.
You wanna just hit the high... You want to just hit the highlights of our good Senator's bill to the South appropriating our water?
Um, yeah. It's probably been two weeks ago, February fourth, I think, was the day of the meeting when you were in my office, Tom. Yeah. We found out that day that a capital outlay had been dropped for twenty-five million dollars, that the title on it is to run a pipeline from the Gila San Francisco to Las Cruces Metropolitan. What we're finding out this is, is this is a bill drop, and it's not a bill, I guess it's a capital outlay request dropped by Senator Smith that would send water from the Gila San Francisco as part of the Arizona Water Settlement Act to Metropolitan Las Cruces. In meetings with the Senator, he said he's just been frustrated that the process has been going on for such, such a time and it hasn't been able to become a final project to use this and we're now running out of time. We have till two thousand and fourteen to come up with a project to start using that or else the water is gone to Arizona. There are several projects that Interstate Stream Commission's been looking at. One of them is, of course, the reservoir using the affluent off the Tri-City Wastewater Treatment Facility that Commissioner Ramos has been working on, as well as some others. One is a pipeline to Deming. And so they've been looking at some of those projects, but none of them have really gotten support from the whole region. And so the state, I guess, kind of the message is, is if we can't come to a decision down here on how to use this water locally, the state will come to a decision for us on how to use this water somewhere else, is kind of the message that's being sent by this, this capital outlay request. I think it was heard loud and clear because there's meetings started to happen. Before we spoke with Senator Smith, I happened to be meeting with representatives in my office that we talked about it. I know there's been more talks between them. There's, I've talked with Allison Civic about all of us need to get together and maybe talk about a project down here that we might not all buy into a hundred percent, but all can buy into it a little bit so it becomes a regional project that we're all on board with. That's kind of the message we're getting, that if, if we don't do something like that, there's not going to be any water. And then the, the concern has been brought up that if you get a pipeline running from Grant County to Dunanana County to Las Cruces Metropolitan area, there's a lot of water rights that have been brought up that aren't being utilized fully here. Well, those water rights can be revoked and then they can be put into that pipeline and shipped to Las Cruces as well. And so then it affects the water, the groundwater that's currently here as well, that those water rights will be pumped fully because of the need in Las Cruces, especially if they lose the lawsuit currently with Texas over the water they're using. There's been talk that that could have a billion-dollar effect on the state of New Mexico if that water is lost and has to go to Texas, continue to go to Texas and Las Cruces can't draw on it. So they will need water from somewhere and I, I think if they took all the water out of Grant County, it doesn't equate to a billion-dollar loss to the state of New Mexico that they're saying Las Cruces would. And so we kind of know what will happen. We, we kind of fall on the short end of the stick all the time when those decisions get made because we don't bring a lot to the table revenue-wise when you look at us at the whole picture of the state.
And Senator Smith represents part of...
Senator Smith with the new redistricting is, Las Cruces is in his district now. And so he would not be taking money out of his district. He would be riding water to his district and his constituents.
And he made it loud and clear that, I mean, if we don't find a use for that water, he will. And it will stay in New Mexico, even though we don't use it. We've been meeting with a lot of public leaders from cities, counties, and we've, we've been looking at different projects that hopefully we can keep this water in the, in the four county area. We're looking at one, one major project that, that hopefully will stay here and provide us all water for, for, for our future. We definitely don't want to lose out on, on the amount of money and, and that's going to be put out there for, for infrastructure.
Yeah. I wanted to bring, Senator Smith by doing this, he's not attempting to harm anyone. What he's saying is that there's a possibility of fourteen thousand acre feet of water leaving the state of New Mexico that he realizes water is, is the lifeblood. Without water, you don't survive. And so he's trying to protect that water. It's not in an attempt to hurt Grant County, Luna County, anyone. It's an attempt to save the water because he's, like I said, he says that he's seen this process going on and it just seems like it's not going anywhere and the deadline's ticking away and we might lose this water and, and he, he doesn't want that to happen. That's, that's the purpose. It's not in an attempt to hurt anybody. He's just trying to do what's in the best interest of the state of New Mexico.
And I think we all could concur that we do want that water to stay in this four county area. We don't want it to go all the way to Las Cruces. We all took off up to Santa Fe and, and talked with Senator Smith as soon as we found out what he was proposing. And, you know, there's, there was a lot of opposition to his, to his pipeline to, to Doñana. So we really do need to come up with some kind of a good project that's going to help everyone here during this four-county region and as soon as possible. And we just can't tell you how, how important it is to get this done and time is of the essence. And we just got to move on it and move on it quick.
Would you just go ahead and continue your comments?
Well, of course, I want to ask Justin to move as quick as possible on the, on the batting cages. So I believe he already stated he was going to start on that. Want to also let you all know the Copper Little League has requested to use our fields again. I believe that Silver might be wanting to use them at the same time for, not for practice, but for actual play.
The city is willing to do whatever it's going to take for them to use those new fields down there. So for the last I heard, that they're going to be fine.
I love blaming things on the mayor.
And I understand, I don't think it was the mayor's fault or the city's fault. It's the district safety guy, I guess, had some concerns and come to find out they're not as major. I mean, the city was already prepared for temporary dugouts and stuff like that. That's what came with the package when they did those fields down there. There's some very minor stuff that they've got to do to, to bring it up where he's going to be satisfied, where they can go ahead and use it.
Yeah, and my understanding, I spoke with Mr. Brown about it and my understanding is, I don't know if the gentleman who did the measurements, tape measure was a little short, but he came up with different distances than the field is actually laid out at. And so the field is set exactly to regulation that it needed to be set at, but for some reason, when it was measured, it was measured short. And so that was one of the concerns is that the fields were too small, but they're not. They are actually at regulation.
Same people built Western, so it's one of the... I really am, so I'm looking forward to seeing these Silver kids play in those fields. But yes, we, Copper has requested to use, use them for practice. And so do we have to put that in a resolution form or what do we have to do?
No, I, I think they just need to, Copper Little League needs to make a request to the commission to use the fields like we do with the shooting range. We have that special use request where you just come forward and make the request and then we'll put it on there. That's what we did in the past.
The one thing that we've advised is if we do start working on that one field, we may have to hold that out if they actually start construction.
Yeah, well, we, we had talked with Justin that we're going to go ahead and work on the other two fields that, not the ones that we're planning for future use with the college, but the, but the other two. So we're going to start putting in those, those batting cages, hopefully as soon as possible. They will be used, I guarantee you that.
No, and I think that's what we did last time is we just had a request from Copper Little League to use those fields.
I tell you what, it's a beautiful thing to go out there and see so many kids just running around and, and practicing out there. They, they get utilized to the fullest. So that's a great investment for our use. So we've got to continue making things better out there.
That it?
That's it.
All right. Commissioner?
Commissioner, a couple of days ago, I attended the EDA roundtable and I think the message that I brought from that was shop local. It helps us all, not only the government, but it, you circulate that money through other businesses in the south, so as all possible, shop local. Thank you.
Thank you. One thing I wanted to bring up, and I'm going to check with Priscilla. The Commissioner Hall brought to me is that they, at the EDA meeting, there was talk of local vendors becoming state certified, so it made it easier for us to buy from them without going out for bid. I'm going to check into that because I've never heard of it. And so I've got to talk with Priscilla. I've heard of the state certification for in-state bidder preference, but not a certification where we don't have to go out for bid. And so I'm going to touch base with her and see if there's something out there that we're not aware of or if maybe it didn't come out the way it was supposed to. Because in the paper, it read that way as well, the, on the Grant County beat, that there's some way for us to buy locally without bidding. And, and I'm not aware of that at this current time. We, we try and buy local as much as possible. That's why we went out for bid for the vehicles. But I don't know of any list that you can get on as a vendor to make it to where I don't have to go out for bid or RFP or get the quotes, I can just go buy from you. And so we're going to follow up on that. And I'll talk with Priscilla to see what she was speaking of because I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay. This leaves me, huh? Okay, one of the questions I had was, we talked about the Southwest solid waste fees?
Yes, I spoke with Steve. Ted is preparing them as we speak. He's been putting them together to bring them in front of the commission as soon as he puts them all together. So he's working on...
It's going to be in March. Yeah. So, you know, I'm just one in the public. I mean, we spent two years trying to find a better way, a better mousetrap, and this is the third year in a row that we've been killed at the, at the legislature on trying to figure out a better way to fight for solid waste fees. So we can't wait any longer. If you've got a lien out there, if you haven't been paying your solid waste, you're going to have a lien come March. So come in and get them paid. We don't want to put liens on your property.
And if anybody owes us over a hundred dollars, we'll get a lien.
So, and that's going to be a bunch of them.
Yeah.
It's over four hundred thousand dollars.
And there's a bunch that are already out there. These will be the new ones that haven't been put yet, so.
And everything else I had was answered. Does anybody need a second round? Seeing none, all those in favor to adjourn?
All right.
I'm with you. All right.